Welcome everyone. This evening, this is a CBAC Colorado Black Health Collaborative Coalition Special Meeting. We have a special guest for training and to help build capacity, you know, for our community members, for our coalition, you know, for everyone, because we're in times where we're going to, we're working on this tackling menthol in the black community. Project sponsored and supported by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. So we are here tonight to, you know, enhance what the work that we're doing. And so we thought it important, it was mentioned, you know, to provide our members and our friends and supporters and partners, you know, an opportunity to build capacity, to give them tools to help in this, in this mission, you know, because that's really what the coalition is all about. Reaching out to the community, educating them about this issue, but also giving tools so that we can go out into the community and really build support and capacity around this issue so that we can help, you know, prepare and providing for public comments and testifying, learning how to share your story with a left of fish. The left official. To promote policy change and best practices for preparing to speak, preparing to testify and provide comments, you know, with the focus on tobacco industry. And you can do this training, you can use these tools in any setting of telling your story. But we, we are glad to have a speaker tonight and a trainer, Stephanie Clark from Shed Light. And that's really, I like that name because she's learning to shed some light on some things for us tonight. And we're so happy to have you, Stephanie. And this is called, you know, speaking truth to power. And, and we know that Stephanie has a reputation in the state and national politics as a communication expert. She'll tell you a little bit about herself. We don't, we want to be mindful of everyone's time. So I don't want to keep talking because y'all know I could talk. So, but she has directed communications programs for candidates, ballot initiatives. You know, she has been standing up as an advocate for underrepresented and underserved communities, giving them a voice and the opportunity to change history. You know, so her approach to communications is rooted in the belief that storytelling is the magic ingredient to building. Social change. So we want to make sure, and I think Tracy's going to ask everyone on here to make sure we have your email. We're going to put a survey in the chat, but we want to also, if you could respond to Tracy and give your email so that we can send you that information also, so that we can keep in touch with you. We know, we want to, to grow this project, you know, we want to appreciate all the people that we have and we want to, you know, to ensure that we are informed. But I'm gonna, without further ado, I'm going to let Stephanie Clark tell you everything about, about her. And then to move on with this special meeting tonight, sponsored by the Colorado Black Health Collaborative Coalition. Thank you, Stephanie, for being with us tonight. And hello, everyone.
Thank you so much, Thelma. And welcome, everyone. It really is an honor for me to be here today with all of you. Really appreciate Colorado Black Health Collaborative inviting me to run this workshop and for your leadership when it comes to public health issues like nicotine and tobacco addiction. Thank you, all of you on the, on the video here on Zoom who are taking your time out of your evening to participate in this training. And I hope that you'll all leave here tonight, having learned something and hopefully even had a little fun. So just a couple of housekeeping items, if you wouldn't mind just putting yourself on mute. I'd love it if you have your video on, but understand that we're, you know, we're all zoomed out, like I think Terry said, and you know, if you want to stay off camera for a little bit, that's totally fine with me too. If you have questions, you can put them in the chat and we're going to make sure Tracy and Thelma will help moderate that. And, you know, since we don't have time to really do a full round of introductions, because I know we have a lot of material to cover, if you wouldn't mind all just typing in the chat, just introducing yourselves, your name, that would be great. And I know that they want to collect emails too, so you can throw that in there as well. As, as Thelma had, had said, I'm a Colorado-based communications consultant. And for the past 25 years, I've worked on issues ranging from criminal justice reform to gun violence prevention to reproductive healthcare. I've helped get bills passed in the state legislature on things like drug sentencing reform, requiring background checks on all gun sales. And I've been working with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids and the American Heart Association for almost two years now. We started with a statewide campaign to end the sale of flavored tobacco in the 2020 legislative session. But when COVID hit, the bill got sidelined. And since that time, we've been working with local jurisdictions to pass ordinances prohibiting flavored tobacco sales. And most recently, the city of Edgewater unanimously passed a flavor ban. And as you know, we're working on a similar measure here in the city of Denver. And that's where all of you come in. I know that you're here today because you care about this issue, because you know that tobacco companies have a long history of aggressively marketing to communities of color. And because our youth are becoming addicted to nicotine at higher rates than they have been in the past two decades, thanks to flavored tobacco products. So before we start, I also want to put something out on the table. And this might come as no surprise to you, but I'm a white woman, a blonde white woman. And I'm really fine with whatever you want to call me, as long as you don't call me old. But I wanted to say that I acknowledge my lived experiences different from yours, as everyone's lived experience is different from each other's on this call. I recognize the privileges that I've had that have given me this opportunity to be here with you and to be able to do this training. I, you know, I wouldn't be the trainer or the storyteller I am without the countless diverse individuals who've trusted me with their stories. And it's our own unique backgrounds and experiences that have shaped who we are and why we're here today. And it's why we all care about building a better future, a more just world, so to speak. You're here because you care about creating a healthy future for yourselves, for your families, for your community, your generation and the next generation. This issue with menthol is a social justice issue. And we all have the power to create change. And as Thelma said, you know, storytelling is so integral to this. And learning to tell your story is one way to help build support for social change movements. And you all have that power within you. I'm just here to help provide the tools to unleash it and take it to the next level. So let's start off with a little poll. Raise your hand if you've testified in front of a legislative body. Maybe it's the city council, the state legislature, or even Congress. So raise your hand. Okay. I like the little hand raising tool too. That's perfect. Great. I see a bunch of hands going up. That's awesome. All right, now, hands down. If you can figure out how to do that on your screen. Now raise your hand. If the thought of testifying scares you more than having a root canal. I'm not seeing any hands, so that's good. That's good. Because sharing your story with legislators, maybe, maybe Terry, I don't think so. I know she's done this before. She's a pro. Sharing your stories with legislators doesn't have to be scary. In fact, it can be really exciting. It can be exhilarating. It can be rewarding. You know, we call them representatives for a reason. They're elected to represent you, their constituents. So if you have something to say, it's their job to listen. So let's talk about what we're going to learn today. We're going to start with a brief overview of how a bill becomes a law. Anyone here remember Schoolhouse Rock? The "I'm Just a Bill, Only a Bill"? I'm not going to sing it. Well, this is important to understand because there are different points in the process where you have a chance to speak up and influence policy. We're going to talk about why your voice matters and how your personal story can move legislators to action. Then we'll go over how to prepare for legislative advocacy and what to expect during public comment or testimony. Finally, we'll talk about key messages and how to incorporate those into your remarks. And we'll save some time at the end to, I'll share some helpful resources with you. And then we'll have some time for, for Q and A. And I'll also make sure you have my contact information if you want to follow up after this training. So. Every legislative body has their own set of rules. For example, the Colorado State Legislature requires that every bill that's introduced gets a committee hearing. So each member is allowed to introduce five bills and they have to have a committee hearing. That's not the case in every state or at the federal level. There are many bills that are introduced that never go anywhere. Now, sometimes that's really great because we don't want them to go anywhere. But sometimes that's also depending on who's in power and who's in charge. Then that's really frustrating and unfortunate. So the process though, even though these things vary, it's fairly consistent. A bill's introduced by someone who feels strongly about a particular issue and they want to champion the effort. And that bill then gets assigned to a committee based on the issue and the committee hearing. They have a committee hearing. So if it's a public health issue, they might get, if the bill will get sent to the Health and Safety Committee or some Health and Environment Committee. The committee names all change based on the legislative body as well. But it goes to something that, you know, that fits, that seems to be appropriate. The committee is usually where they have the first point of public testimony. People are able to come in, express their viewpoints, they're given time on each side. And then if the bill passes the committee, after that, it goes to a vote. By the entire body. So in the state legislature, that means the House or the Senate, wherever the bill got introduced. If it went to the House first, it would go to the committee. It would go to the floor to have a reading and a floor vote. They have two floor votes. And then if it passes, it goes to the other body. Now, in the Denver City Council, it's a unicameral legislature. So once it passes the committee. It'll go to the floor or the full, full city council. They'll have a reading there. They may take public comment at that point as well. Somebody has to call for it, but on bills that might be a little more controversial, that tends to happen. And then if it passes, it will go on to the executive, in this case with Denver, Mayor Hancock, for signature. Now, we know the executive can also veto the bill unless it passes by a veto-proof majority, which in Denver is nine votes. So if you get nine votes, there's really no chance that that's going to be vetoed. So thinking about this process. Who do you think that policymakers listen to? And I'm going to just say, because I can't see everybody on my screen all at once, that you can unmute yourself and.
No one. They listen to no one.
Lobbyist.
You think.
Lobbyist.
Lobbyists, yeah. They listen to lobbyists. Why do you think they listen to lobbyists?
Because they get paid. And the lobbyists give them some kickback.
And these big organizations that contribute money to campaign, to their campaign contributions, right? They're aligned in their, they're aligned in their wallet. But why do you think that lawmakers need to listen to their constituents?
Because we voted them in.
That's right. Absolutely. And what happens if they don't listen to you?
They vote out.
That's, that's right. That's right. If they don't listen to you, you're going to vote them out. You have the power here to, you know, to say whether they get to keep their job or whether they get the boot. And that's why your voice is so important. And if they don't hear from you, you know, it's like that old adage, like if you don't complain, you know, if you don't do something, you don't have the right to complain, right? So it's important that we speak up. Now, thinking about the tobacco issue specifically, what experiences do you think that you bring to the table about this discussion?
Personal. Our own personal experiences we bring to the table.
Yeah. What, what experiences specifically? What is something that you personally could tell your council member about this issue that they might not hear from someone else?
The results of smoking.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. The health impact.
That I have worked with young people who have had these devices and have ended up having negative responses.
Mm-hmm. So having this direct relationship with people who are actually using these products and how it's affected their lives. Any of you have children? Any of you have children? So as a parent?
But also as a person who smoked as a teen. I don't smoke now, but I started smoking when I was a teenager and it was really challenging to quit. I didn't realize that I was starting to use an addictive drug when I started smoking.
Right. So people have had a personal experience, who've gotten hooked, knowing how hard it is to quit once you've had that, once you've gotten hooked and once you're addicted, right? So I can give you a list of talking points and we're going to go over some talking points. And I can give you all the research and all the data. And I could tell you that 80% of today's youth who use nicotine actually started with a flavored product. But anyone can go in there and recite facts and figures. And what I tell people is you don't need to be an issue expert to testify. There are plenty of those. And then there are plenty of those who pretend to be issue experts. But what makes your testimony compelling is that it's uniquely yours. Your story is your own and what, what you are doing and what you're providing by sharing your story as you're making it personal, you're providing a connection point and you're helping to move your lawmakers to take action. Now, I do an entire training on storytelling because it really is the secret sauce when it comes to movement building. I mean, I have sat in legislators' offices, watched gun violence survivors bring their legislators to tears. And then I've seen them go to the floor and make the right call and take that, you know, make that right vote because they were so moved by someone's personal story, personal experience. And speaking out and meeting with your elected official, it gives them motivation to do the right thing. But it also does something else. It gives them cover when they get pushback for doing the right thing. You've seen legislators who've gotten beaten up over votes, right? Well, if they can go back. And say, look, I heard from my constituents overwhelmingly, this is the policy they wanted. I'm voting with them. It gives them this cover. So it really is so important. And even though we're not going to do a deep dive on storytelling today, I do want you to keep that top of mind as you're preparing your public comment and testimony. So let's dive in, into what to prepare and what to expect. Oh, I forgot. I got. So excited, I forgot to skip my slide. So first, I want to get out of the way, what to expect. So first of all, you want to find out when's the hearing taking place? Or. They're, oh, we know they take public comment on Mondays at 5:00 PM. So anyone can speak on any topic. And this is a great opportunity that we have actually been using a great tactic to keep this issue in the forefront while we're waiting for a bill to be introduced, while we're waiting for this to start. We want the city council to know, we're not going away. We really care about this. And they need to take action and they need to show leadership. So you, how long do you have to speak is another question. So typically, it's about three minutes, but you should always be prepared that they could cut your time down if they have too many speakers. I've seen this done in the legislature, in the city council. Straining and disappointing, since you've spent. All this time, prepare, send your testimony. To the council by email with a follow-up note saying, hey, I was there. I was waiting. You didn't get to me, but I want you to hear what I have to say. It's really important. And then you want to find out, you know, where's the meeting being held? Is it in person? Is it on Zoom? As we know, protocols continue to change because of COVID. We went back. We're now, we're back on, you know, virtual. There's some hybrid. So you'll want to look at the city council website before you go anywhere to show up or to get the login information so that you can be on the Zoom. So when you're thinking about preparing, do you think it's better to just go in and wing it? Or you think it would be helpful to have something in writing?
Have it in writing.
Have it in writing. Have it in writing. Right. We don't want to go in and wing it because that's when we get flustered or we forget important things. So it's good to get it down in writing to start. One thing about writing is that writing words for speaking is different than writing words for reading. So something might look good on paper, but you get a little tripped up when you say it out loud, which is why you should always practice. I'm going to talk about that again. But, you know, practice, practice, practice makes perfect. It's true. Makes you more, makes you more comfortable. Now, Terry said, is winging it more natural sounding? Well, you know, it might be. But again, you know, you want to be the most effective communicator that you can be. And if you're somebody who can go in and wing it, I think it's still really important to have something down on paper so that you know you're covering all your points. Some people like to write out a full narrative. Some people like to write talking points or bullet points. That's fine too, whatever works for you. But it would be unfortunate if you spent all this time kind of preparing and thinking about it and then you went in and you're like, oh no, I forgot to say that most important thing. So there's also a structure that I want to talk about as far as how you structure your remarks to make the most effective. It's good to have an opening statement that usually takes the form of like, thank you, Mayor so-and-so and members of the Denver City Council. My name is Terry Richardson and I'm here speaking today on behalf of myself. Or if you're representing a group, if you're representing CBHC, then you can, you know, you can certainly say that too, because obviously having the organization gives you half. Now, I don't know if the organization has any protocols around saying you're representative, so I don't want to speak out of turn. That's something that I would defer to Tracy and to Thelma. But obviously, we're all here today doing this training. And so hopefully that is something that you can refer to in your testimony. So you want to state your position. You want to be really clear from the outset why you're here. I'm here to support a citywide ordinance that ends the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol, no exemptions, all products, all flavors, all locations. And then you want to establish your credibility. And how do you do that? You do that by sharing any personal qualifications, any experience that you have. I think it was Margie who said she worked with young people who had had an addiction. Or, you know, somebody else might have, might work in a school. You might see kids in that setting. Or you might work in a hospital or a doctor's office. You might be a doctor or, you know, like I know Dr. Richardson isn't. I know I keep picking on her, but that's just because I know her the most. So, you know, whatever your qualifications that give you an additional layer of credibility are important to include. For example, you know, I'm a Colorado native. I live in Hilltop and I've worked as a nurse for the last 17 years. And then explain why you're there to testify. You know, I thought it would really benefit the committee from hearing from someone who provides direct patient care to children who would be affected by this ordinance. And then you want to tell your story. So again, we, we have, we know there are a lot of facts and figures, but those are going to be said. Somebody's going to be there as a policy expert and they're going to share that information. What is the real world experience that you have that if this bill becomes a law, how will it improve people's lives? How will you, you know, be more comfortable? How will people in your community benefit from this? And, you know, one person's experience can be a lot more persuasive than a bunch of statistics about thousands of people, because it's a story that carries the moral and emotional weight that numbers just don't have. You know, a good testimony does combine a little of both. But, but really, like I said before, each of us has a story that can move others. And it's important when you testify, you're appealing both to their head and to their heart, right? The head is your strategy, your thinking, your planning. But the heart is really your emotional connection and how you move people to action. And that's how you're going to gain their support. Then you want to summarize the arguments. So when you finish explaining your points, you're going to reiterate them in summary. I believe there are three main reasons why the council should support this ordinance to end the sale of flavored tobacco. And you can reiterate. And at the end, you want to just close by thanking them and saying, you know, I'm ready to take any questions that you might have. So that's kind of the story structure. And I know someone asked about getting a copy of this PowerPoint. I know this is recorded. I also have a handout that we can send you as a follow-up that kind of breaks all of this down. I think that's really helpful as you're, you know, coming through to, to write up your story. I'm also happy to review it. And that's something we can talk about at the end a little bit more too. But yeah, that's, that's the basic structure. And again, you want to make sure that you are having two versions of your statement. So a three-minute version and then some places where you could cut it down. What if they only, they say, all right, now all of a sudden, we're going to just say, it's only two minutes. You only have two minutes. Well, at the last minute, you don't want to have to be editing. You might cross out a thing or two, but you want to have another version. So you've got a backup. Skip to page. All right. So what do you bring to this hearing? And if you're, you know, at home, you don't have to bring it very far, right? You just have to go to your computer, but it's good to be prepared. So you're going to have your, your two versions of your statement. If you wear glasses, you should keep your glasses on because no one wants to be, you know, not able to read what they wrote. Have a pen or pencil handy for jotting down last minute thoughts. Bring some water with you or have something. I know I always get very parched when I'm talking. These committee hearings are long. You might want to bring snacks. Some, if you were going in person, some places let you have the snacks. Some places you can't have them in the committee room. But you want to just be prepared that it might be a long time. Now, again, that's actually one of the best things about doing this via Zoom because you don't have to leave your house. We talk about what to wear. Well, if you're on Zoom, you can just be presentable from the waist up, right? Nobody is going to see you from the, from the waist down. Obviously, if you're going in in person, you should look, you know, something presentable, business casual attire or something that shows that you take this seriously, that, you know, you are respecting them and their role as council members. And they should respect you and look at you as somebody who is really taking this seriously. I've seen some very interesting clothing choices when I have gone to testimony at the Capitol on gun violence prevention bills from some very fervent Second Amendment supporters. But I think that, you know, it's just one of those things that it's important, you know, that we think about. When to arrive? Well, just as you would arrive early for an in-person meeting or make sure you're on time, it's good to join the webinar a few minutes early. Five, 10 at least to make sure that your video and audio settings are working, making sure your lighting is right. You know, Tracy and I got on here a little bit early to make sure that I was able to share my screen and that you could see me and all of that. So again, these hearings can take a long time. Pace yourself and plan accordingly. And then how do you address members of the committee? There's typically a protocol that we follow. You can usually only speak when you're addressed by name or called upon. So you'll sit down in the chair. They'll say, you know, hi Martha, you know, go ahead. And you'll want to start with, you know, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, or Mr. Mrs. Vice, Mr. Madam Vice Chair, or council member so-and-so, whoever is calling on you. But it's typically that you wouldn't speak out of turn, that you would wait for them to call on you. They follow their, you know, their protocols. And then how to respond to questions? So we're going to do a little bit on pivoting because I think it's an important thing to have. But you want to prepare for, in advance for handling questions. The general rule is you always want to be honest and direct. And if you don't know the answer to a question, you, it's okay to say so. You don't want to speculate. You don't want to say, oh, well, I think it's 5,000 people. Or I think there are 15,000 flavors on the market. No, because you don't want to speculate and give them an opportunity to poke holes in your argument or undermine anything else that you might have said. So it's totally reasonable to say, you know what? It's a good question and I just, I'm not 100% sure of the answer, but I'd like to find out and get back to you. And I will follow up with you via email or, you know, phone call or however you want to follow out. But never make up an answer. And never testify above your level of expertise. Like I said, there are going to be experts on the policy and on the bill language in the room that can speak to how it's going to be implemented, what it's going to cost. But that's, again, that's not why you're there. You're there to give them the real world, the real experiences on how this policy affects their constituents. You also want to be prepared. Sometimes members like to speak and they like to hear themselves speak. And they may use their time as a question to restate their personal views. So they may be not asking you a question. They're just kind of putting something out there. So you can always ask for clarification. Excuse me, ma'am, did I miss a question? I just want to make sure that I'm clear. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. And that should hopefully give you a little bit of comfort. You know, I typically see, and I've been in more committee hearings than I can remember, but I typically see those types of question, follow-up questions are typically left for policy experts. I will see, you know, people express emotional responses like, wow, I mean, that's really touching. I'm really sorry that you're going through that. Or I really appreciate you coming here to share your story. But typically, you don't get a lot of questions, but I'll prepare you in case you do. So let's talk a little bit about some do's and don'ts or what I call cautions and considerations, if we're putting it a little more mildly. I like to use humor, as I'm sure you could tell. But we have to use humor with caution, especially in this setting. It could be misunderstood, and it might not go over so well. You also want to be confident, right? You're in there, you're, you came, you're prepared, you're ready to go. You want to be confident, you want to be direct, but you want to be polite. It's always important, you know, they're used to being treated with respect. So regardless of what you think about their personalities or their stance on an issue, it's important to be diplomatic. And I'm sure that we all have our own opinions on some members of council, on some members of the legislature. But, you know, you always want to be thoughtful and considerate, even if you're disagreeing. You know, you've heard the old adage, like, you can disagree without being disagreeable. And so I think it's important that, you know, that we do that. Be honest. You know, there's a temptation sometimes when we get nervous to kind of budge things a little bit. But don't do that because that, again, will only weaken your testimony and undermine your credibility. Practice, 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 right? Practice makes perfect. So again, you want to seem authentic. You want to come off as like, you know, as natural. Some people can do that, some people can't. You might practice a bunch of times and feel like, look, I still want to rely on my notes. And that's totally okay. But practicing it does get you more comfortable with it. You can practice in front of a mirror. You can videotape yourself. You can practice with your friend or family member. But the more comfortable, again, that you get, the better that you will do. And then go with the flow. So if somebody's already gotten up and basically said exactly what you were going to say or something very similar, you want to consider maybe shortening your remarks or focusing on an area that hasn't yet been addressed. So, you know, a lot of times, like I said, these committee meetings can go long. I've been in committee meetings that have gone well until the, you know, past midnight, wee hours of the morning. So you want to acknowledge, look, I know you've had a long day. I'm going to actually cut, cut back what I was going to say and give you an abbreviated version because I know, you know, some of what I've said, I was going to say has already been said. So for the don'ts, never personally attack or insult a member. I think that, you know, that's pretty obvious. Again, like I said, if you can totally disagree with them, but personal attacks are not, not a good, not good form. Don't take a member's comments personally. You know, they are doing their job as they perceive it. And your job is to just remain cool and professional. And, you know, some members may appear distracted. They may not be looking at you. They may be writing. They may be going to grab their, you know, food from someone who brought it in. But unless, you know, unless somebody asks you to stop, just keep rolling. You've got to know that they're assuming that you're going to proceed and that you're going to not get distracted by a lot of activity in the room or if they're not looking at you. And really distractions are the norm. You know, they talk to each other, they talk to their staff, they pass notes. Sometimes they get materials that they read. There could be TV people in the room, camera people, photographers who are wandering around. And they may even take pictures of you. They might, you know, have a camera and have a flash go off in your face when you're trying to speak. And if you get flustered, it's totally fine to just pause for a few seconds and get your composure and get your thoughts back. But, you know, you just want to kind of know going into that, that there can be a lot of activity. And finally, don't get into the argument, any arguments with the opposition. You know, sometimes they'll come and they'll be there in full force, and they'll be loud, and they'll try to pick a fight with you. But don't take their bait, because that's not why you're there. You're not there to convince them. We're never going to convince them. You're there to share your story and to help legislators understand, policy experts understand why this is such an important policy. So I'm going to go into just some basic talking points. And again, I'll make sure that you have all of these. Sometimes you might want to weave one of them or two of them into your testimony. First of all, we've got to end the tobacco industry's targeting of our kids and communities of color with flavored products. It is time to stop this cycle of addiction for good. Tobacco actually kills more people annually than AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined. So it's, it's a leading cause of death. We know that most teens who are going to use tobacco are going to get hooked. Actually, three out of four teens who smoke in high school are still going to be smoking as adults. E-cigarette use is now at epidemic levels. The Surgeon General has called this an epidemic. It's a healthcare crisis. We've got more than one in four high schoolers and more than one in 10 middle schoolers using e-cigarettes. That's a lot. And kids are no longer experimenting with them, but they're using them frequently and they're becoming addicted. And so we know that 40% of high school students who use tobacco products or vaping, they're doing it at least 20 days a month. So that's with regularity. Another important point is that the tobacco industry is attracting and addicting the next generation on nicotine with flavored tobacco products. And that includes e-cigarettes, includes menthol cigarettes and flavored cigars. And these products have been flooding the market in recent years. And they are continuing the tobacco industry's long history of targeting kids and targeting communities of color. And many e-cigarettes contain very high levels, very highly addictive levels of nicotine that pose serious risks to their health. These products deliver massive doses of nicotine that put our youth at greater risk of addiction. They're sold in devices that deliver these like potent bursts of nicotine that can lead to a rapid intense addiction. But many of these young users, like the Juul products, Juul pods, they don't even know that these products contain any nicotine at all. Some of them think they're just smoking and inhaling a flavored vapor. And this is important because nicotine can really harm adolescent brain development, which continues till about age 25. It can affect learning, it can affect attention and memory. It can also prime the brain for addiction to other drugs. And we just really don't know much about the long-term health effects of e-cigarettes because they haven't been around long enough. But the bottom line is we shouldn't let the tobacco industry use our kids as guinea pigs. My next slide, I want to break down that, that's a little bit further because I know this is really important to you all. And CBHC has been really leading on the menthol front. We know, I mean, we, we know that the FDA has issued now a ruling that they are going to be working to, you know, remove menthol cigarettes from the market. This is huge, a huge victory. However, it's going to take a long time before, before that even happens. You know, this could be years, and we don't have that time to waste. You know, we know that the tobacco industry has been using menthol and cigarettes to addict new young smokers, especially in communities of color, for years. You know, that 40-plus years. Mint and menthol are actually the second most preferred choice of flavors among our youth. We know that because of the cooling effects and the numbing effect that it has on the throat, it makes it easier to hook kids on smoking. And actually, over half of these smokers use menthol cigarettes. Also, it should come as no surprise that 70% of African-American youth smokers smoke menthol cigarettes, and 85% of all African-American smokers overall smoke menthol cigarettes. So that's a huge percentage. And it's obviously clear how we got to this point. And then what is the impact? Well, it's having a devastating impact on the health of the black community, right? Suffering from the greatest burden of tobacco-related mortality of any racial or ethnic group in the United States. You know, each year, 45,000 African-Americans die from a smoking-related illness. And unless we take action now, you know, we're going to addict a whole new generation of smokers, over half a million who will die prematurely from a tobacco-related disease. So this is a huge health crisis. Menthol cigarettes and, and e-cigarettes are continuing to be heavily advertised, widely available, and actually even priced cheaper in some African-American communities, which make them more appealing, especially to under-resourced youth. You know, the person, they got to come up with the money to get these products. How are they doing that? Well, these, these tobacco companies are directly marketing, pricing their products to sell in, in communities and making them more attractive. Ending the sale of menthol cigarettes is something that's supported by many African-American groups, not only this Colorado Black Health Collaborative, but the NAACP, the National Urban League, National African-American Tobacco Prevention Network, and many, many others. And so this is something that, you know, is recognized as a huge problem and something that we need to really focus in on addressing. And I think that, you know, this is something you've talked about and, and should continue. Because I will say that one of the things that we have been hearing in discussions with city council members is that this is an exemption that they're shopping around, right? They're going to go and they're going to pass, you know, a ban on flavored e-cigarettes, but they're going to allow menthol to continue. Well, that's not okay. That's not okay. We have got to make sure that that does not happen and that we don't let any member think that that is an acceptable exemption to this policy. So I told you I would talk about how to handle tough questions. So I call these bridges or pivots, and they help you get from a tough question back to your key message. So I like to do a little role play. Thelma, can you ask me what I have for breakfast?
Yes, Stephanie, what did you have for breakfast this morning?
Oh, this morning I had yogurt with some granola and some fruit. All right, now ask me again.
Stephanie, what did you have for breakfast this morning?
Oh, this morning I had yogurt and granola and fruit. And, oh, it was so delicious, I was full for hours. All right, now ask me one more time.
Stephanie, what did you have for breakfast this morning?
I had, well, this morning I had yogurt with granola and some fruit. And it was great, but you know what, Thelma? I'm really here today because I want to talk about dinner because I am so excited for dinner. This is the first time in weeks that I've gotten to go out for dinner, and I just can't wait to go to my favorite restaurant. So there you go. You see, it might be a silly example, but it shows how you're able to just kind of, with a few words, move yourself into the territory that you want to be talking about. I want to talk about dinner. I don't want to talk about breakfast anymore, right? So I was able to say, this is what I'm really here to talk about today. Or I appreciate you asking about that. There's some pivots on here. It's a really good question, but what's really important to note is this. Or, you know what, that's a common misconception, but what our research shows. Or, you know what, my experience shows. Or, that's, you know, that's great, but the reason that we're here today is this. So really just some very easy ways and things that you can always practice. And you can practice this even with, you know, friends and family in your own conversation. Someone asks you a question, practice a little pivot. I don't really feel like talking about that. I really want to talk about something else and see how you can steer the conversation that way. So, testimony, but what are some other ways that you can share your story? Anyone have any ideas?
Letter to the editor.
Good one, letters to the editor. Yep, letters to the editor. I know I have that little image there. I have other thing. What else?
Email, you can email.
Yes, you can email the council members. That's right. What other ways?
Pictures.
You can share pictures. Where else? Where is everyone getting information these days?
Social media.
There you go. Yeah, so this is actually things that you can do. If you wrote up a testimony, you can, you can use it. You can turn it into a letter to the editor, and you can adapt it, send it into the newspaper. You can send it as a follow-up email to the council. Make sure that they are, you know, reading it as well. Posting on your own social media. And I have here, we've got our Flavors Hook Kids Denver website. We've got our Flavors Hook Colorado Instagram account, following us on social media. I know that every week we do a coalition email that gives all the organizations different posts, sample posts. Sometimes we'll do sample graphics and things that you can share. So staying on top of it in social media is a great way to build support, to make sure that your friends, your family, your neighbors know, you know, what you're doing and why this is so important. So this is some additional helpful info here. The city council website, too, is where they'll post, you know, their calendar, what they're covering, how they're meeting, so that you know where to go and when. All right, so that was a lot of info, I know. I'm going to take a pause here and answer some questions.
I was going to also add to that, to find out what's going on. We have started to gather, making sure that we have current information as well. And we have an information specialist, Martha Johannes, on our call tonight, but she's on our staff. You can reach out to her at Colorado Black Health Collaborative. We have questions. And especially to, Stephanie mentioned having and knowing and being aware of the current statistics and, you know, and those current points. So we're here to help support in that as well, the Colorado Black Health Collaborative. So just wanted to say that.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, any, any questions about any of this material or anything I didn't cover that you might want to hear?
Stephanie, suppose somebody will dispute what you said. Like, for instance, you said there is 25% of African-American teens now who have been on drugs or alcohol or tobacco. And then they say, oh, no, that's not right, you know, from the council. I heard it, I understand it's 35%. How do you make your point clear? And, and so that people are not thinking that you're telling a lie to them?
I think that's a great question, Margie. And what I would say is that you should always have sources for any statistics that you give. So if you're going to say 25%, well, well, actually, that number came from the, you know, this report or this research or the state report that's done every year on tobacco addiction or something. So, so knowing if you are going to put facts and stats and research in your testimony, that you have those sources written down.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely, it's a great question.
Hi, this is Jerry Ajayi. I don't know why the camera won't work. My question has to do with, how do you, how do you build a following? Like, you know, everybody always talks about social media. And I think it's a great way to grab people's attention, but there are so many avenues. So is there one avenue that you think is easier and more effective? Like, do you do Facebook Live? Do you do podcasts? So can you give us some direction in terms of that?
Sure. Well, I think, and you're talking about like your own personal social media. Right? So I think the first way to do it is by making sure that you're following everybody out there who you could possibly be following. You go on there, you just spend a lot of time, you know, and you've got a free, few free minutes or you're, you know, relaxing with the news or something, which is not very relaxing after dinner. And that you go on and that you find all of these people. You get your friends, you make sure you've got them. If you're doing Facebook and Instagram or Facebook and Twitter, that you have people that you're following, and it's consistent on both accounts. So that's the first way to do it. The second way to do it, and I'm not the expert on algorithms and how, why some people see something and other people don't see something that you post. There's all these weird algorithms and formulas. these weird algorithms and formulas that determine that. But I think one of the important things to do is posting content, as much content as you can, because that's how you're going to get it in front of the most people and you're going to get people to engage with you. And I think that helps you get more followers and gain more interest and more traction on social media. You know, you see like organizations and, um, and campaigns, they actually go out and they put, you know, they do ads that build their lists. Obviously you're not going to do that, um, nor should you. Unless you're, unless you're selling a product or you're a service or a company, but for your own personal account, I think just going out there following, making sure you're following everybody who's relevant to this issue, um, you know, on both sides. The other thing I want to say about social media is that, um, there are a lot of trolls, as you know. So there are people who are going to go on, who are going to post things just to poke the bear and just to get you riled up. Don't engage. Like I said, just like the people in the testimony room or wherever you are, you don't need to engage with them, shut them down, block them from your account. You know, it's important that you have privacy measures that are on your account, um, so that you are protected. You know, if your account is not public, it's harder for people to follow you, obviously, because they have to request. I'm thinking of Instagram specifically, if your account is private, someone's going to have to request to follow you. But, you know, you might just be more comfortable doing that. Everybody has kind of a different level of, um, comfort when it comes to putting themselves out there on social media. But I always say, don't, don't feed the trolls.
What's, do you think is easier to do? The Instagram, the Twitter, a podcast?
I, well, I think a podcast is obviously, that's a lot of work because, you know, you've got to record something, you got to get a platform to put it out, you got to get people to follow it. I think that it depends on your audience. You know, social media is a very generational thing, right? Like my kids don't have Facebook accounts. They would never go, you know, they wouldn't go on Facebook. My mother, uh, doesn't have a, you know, she, she actually, my mother-in-law does not have a Twitter, uh, a Twitter, neither my mother or my mother-in-law have Twitter accounts. One of them doesn't have an Instagram account because that's obviously a younger thing. So I think it's A, what you're most comfortable with, B, who your audience is. So if you, you know, if your audience is like us, you know, Facebook is a great place to do it. Facebook has a lot of great things. You can make, um, you can make events on Facebook. You could do a Facebook Live if you, you know, if you were so inclined. I think that's, you know, that's awesome. If you want to do that, I certainly, you know, that's, that's going beyond. I don't even do that.
Thank you.
Yes, it's a great question, great question.
Any other questions though? I think this was a very awesome, um, presentation. It was very comprehensive for me. And I just want, if you might have any other questions or comments or any feedback, uh, Tracy just put the survey monkey in the chat. You can click on that link or you can copy it and, um, put it on your browser. And please, um, respond to the survey. We, we're really trying to get more people involved, spread the word, engage more people. And we appreciate you all coming tonight. I didn't say my name. My name is Thelma Craig and, um, with the Colorado Black Health Collaborative. So if you have questions, you, we have, um, um, info@coloradoblackhealth.org. But we want you to have more questions. Um, Stephanie is well-informed, um, as you can see. And, um, Stephanie, you want to say more, but let's see if anybody.
I have a question.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi, this is Terri. So all of us probably can relate some story around tobacco in some way, whether it's directly ourselves or someone in our family. So when you're deciding to, um, pick the story, what are some of the elements that you think would be best in, in picking story that you're going to tell?
That's a great question. And I think that's something also that you touched on is really important. You know, some people say like, well, I don't have a story, but my sister was addicted to, you know, to tobacco, smoked for years. All that's still your story. That's still a story you could tell. I would say that if you are going to tell a story about a family member, it, it would be nice to ask their permission or make sure they're comfortable, uh, before you do that or you don't have to share their name. But I, I think that's always, you know, a nice thing to do. And then I think, you know, when I'm, when thinking about a story is pick the story that you're most comfortable telling, that you think really illustrates the issue, you know, that really speaks to the issue. You might have, you know, multiple stories. You might have a, you know, a grandfather who died from lung cancer because he was a, you know, two-pack-a-day smoker. You might have a, you know, a child who has been, you know, vaping for the past year and, you know, isn't able to quit. You might, um, have something professionally in your life that connects to the issue. So I think, you know, it can, and it can also be more than one story. You know, if you're, if you're able to tell a few stories and weave them together, look, this is a generational thing for me. I've seen my grandfather do this and now my kid, you know, this is really, this is really scary for me. So just really, you know, I think thinking about all of the stories, how you can weave them together, um, is, is another way of doing it.
Great, good question. I want to say something else before the next question. Two, I want to say something else before the next question. We're also going to be, um, our next coalition meeting, reach out to us and find out more about what we're doing, um, in this area. But we're going to have a map and present a map on, um, the events and things that are happening locally, um, and nationally, um, for this issue. And when there's opportunity to testify, we're going to try to create that and present that at our next coalition meeting, um, called, um, Policy Bytes. And we're going to try to, we just, Martha, you didn't know that, but we just planned it last night. So, um, but, and we're going to be working with, um, another partner to do that. But our next coalition meeting, we're going to try to look at that and, and have talking points. And so just wanted to say that before, um, another question.
Yes, I mean, you, you are all doing so much on this and I hope that this has given you some tools so that you can go out and, you know, give public comment. I know that we're always looking for people to participate in that public comment period as we're gearing up and waiting for this bill to be introduced. Again, there'll be some, you know, different points during the hearing process when you'll be able to share that. But you don't have to wait. You can write to your council member right now. You can use these stories to, you know, send them an email. You can, uh, use them to share on social media and with letters to the editor. And my email is up here and I'll make sure that you have follow-up materials with my information. But if you're, you know, if you want to run it by me, I'm happy to take a look. I mean, I'm, you know, always here as a resource.
Well, we certainly appreciate you, um, Stephanie, and, um, it's for shedding the light. I like that. The social impact. And, um, we want to know if there's any other questions before we go. Please, in the chat, there's a link, um, that Colorado Black Health Collaborative posted. Please click on that link and do the, um, 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 take the survey so that we can get it, put your email in there if you want us to send you out our next coalition meeting to find out what we're doing because we're going to try, we want to make this impactful. We want to have information. We want to be able to make this interesting because we know people are zoomed out, but we got some really good hot topics coming up on this issue, um, and next, our next coalition meeting. I think we're planning it for like the first week in November. But you can always email our office at info@coloradoblackhealthcollaborative to find out what's happening. But any more questions?
I have a comment. I have a, I apologize.
No, go ahead, please.
Um, I, I'd just like to say that I think it's a very good idea to have that map because I'm a member of nine-to-five National Association of Working Women and I've testified in front of legislators on several occasions. And it's good to know when and where that takes place in, so that people can be involved. Um, so I think getting that map out and letting people know, um, the days and the times, uh, where they're having, accepting, uh, public testimonies would be a great idea.
Okay, we just, um, talked about that in our meeting last night. We're working on that. Ms. Bradford, so, um, like I said, we have our email and we have your email. Hopefully we can reach out to you and we will follow up with the people on this, um, on this event tonight. Any other question? I think Martha, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, ask a really quick question, Stephanie, is, I guess, what is the biggest lesson that you've learned when it comes to storytelling or that you wish you knew? Before giving like.
That is a great question. That is a great question. I, I think the biggest lesson is authenticity. I think that it's so important that you maintain authenticity, that you never feel like someone's putting words in your mouth, um, that you're never feeling that you're manipulated, being forced to tell something, feeling tokenized. Um, I think authenticity is the key. It's really how I've built trust with so many people who I have worked with. I mean, I have worked with people, you know, years ago who I still have relationships with because, you know, I helped them to find their authentic story and tell their authentic stories. So I think that would probably be my biggest one.
Thank you, um, Stephanie. Any other questions before we want to be mindful of time because we said an hour? And we appreciate Stephanie for this awesome presentation. And, um, any other questions before we say goodbye? Okay.
Feel free to email too. Thank you so much. This has been an amazing group. I can't, I mean, this is like an unbelievable turnout. I wish again that we could have done this in person, but I'm so grateful to have had this opportunity with you. And thank you all so much for what you're doing. Again, your stories are so important to this. And hopefully we will soon see a day where Denver really takes leadership and action on this issue.
Okay, thank you all. And there's no more questions. We appreciate you being here. Please take the survey, um, and so reach out to info, Tracy@info@coloradoblackhealth.org, for, um, if you want the link again, uh, but I think she was going to send it to everyone who's on the call, on the call tonight. So thank you so much.